To the flag of the United States of America and to the right for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Call a meeting to order. Motion to approve the agenda.
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both carry.
For the minutes.
For the minutes, and they look pretty good, so I moved approval.
Second is good.
I'll second that motion.
Morning.
Then you're welcome. All in favor?
Aye.
Both carry. General public. Dan.
I didn't recognize him, Peggy, with his glasses off, but he had his shirt on.
Oh, yeah.
It's time for public hearing to establish level B service on 165th between Delaware and Elm. That's the road we're taking, the bridge and chain.
Yes, this is, uh, that, that stretch of, that one mile stretch of road on 165th between Delaware and Elm. We've had, uh, a public meeting on it once with the owners where we explained that we're going to remove that bridge and put a railcar in, and with that we'd be turning the road into a level B road. So basically what we're looking for is to do the, uh, formal public hearing for the roadway, to turn it to a level B, uh, stretch road, and once we set date and time, I will send that letter on to all of the property owners to let them know. Uh, I talked to the supplier and told him when we'd be looking for, uh, that railcar delivery, and he said it shouldn't be a problem. Uh, I told him I had funding available come July 1st, so I wouldn't be able to pay for it until after that, but...
Yeah. It's gonna take us a while to get this hearing.
Basically make sure that he didn't sell off all the sizes that we were looking for.
Okay, good.
So when we do this, you'll send the letter to them, they'll have a time to object?
Or... Yes. Uh, what it is, is we have to get it advertised no less than three days and no more than twenty from the day of the hearing. Um, and then between us setting the date and the hearing, they have the ability to object or file a claim for damages by us switching to the level B. Basically what that means is if they don't want to switch to the level B, we'll just won't replace the bridge.
But other than that, I mean, we haven't had any objections when the people were here.
Everybody's been in favor of we don't look for this plan of that. So I don't see any objection from the landowners. Just a whole fraction.
So you have any...
How far do you want to go? In a couple of weeks to get this done? Set the date for a couple of weeks from now?
Yeah, I mean, we can do the thirteenth or the twentieth, I think, or the, the next, Tuesday, next year.
In fairness to the people that, you know, this affects, they're all farmers, that we want to put it after planning? Is there any reason to do that, or is it just formality?
Formality, as far as I'm concerned.
Hopefully it'll be done paving by then?
I doubt it.
For you?
I mean, I, I'm looking at, uh, the way the weather's calling for this week, we'll get today and tomorrow and possibly Friday, so we'll have, uh, the hardy stretch road done with concrete. And then next week we'll start the other one, another seven mile job. Um, yeah, in theory, hopefully we're done with concrete by Memorial Day. Now we just got shoulder and left.
The twentieth reasonable?
Yeah, the twentieth would work.
Okay. I'll make a motion to set the date of, uh, May twentieth, time nine o'clock, if you want to do it.
It should be short.
Short?
Do you have anything scheduled?
You have any idea?
No, I would have to check. I can check it while you're in drainage, so just set a time, and if that doesn't work, I'll let you know.
Yeah, just set a...
I, or do you...
Time, because there's...
Eight forty-five? I mean, I, do you want to do it right away?
Yeah, wait, is that, was that making my...
Okay, let's set the twen- May twentieth, eight thirty-five, for the, uh, public hearing to establish level B service for 165th Street between Delaware Avenue and Elm Avenue. And if that works, it'll be eight thirty-five, May twentieth.
Okay. I'll second that motion. Any other discussion? Will you get that to the paper, or do you want me to get that?
Um, yeah, 'cause I don't have a public hearing such, I don't have the language you might need, so...
Okay, I can get it to him.
That'd be great. Thank you.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Both carry.
That's all I got. Otherwise, like I said, we're, we're paving on, uh, P sixty-six. We did have a couple of people over the weekend that, uh, got onto the road, drove through some barricades, uh, had to report. It doesn't look like there was any damage done to the pavement.
It's amazing, you know, barricades don't mean anything to people.
Yeah, yeah.
What was it? Tractor, was it?
One of them was a tractor. Uh, I believe he was far enough up north that it had strength, that it shouldn't have been an issue. Um, but yeah, the, the pickup drove on some of the newer stuff, but it was significantly lighter. I can't see any visual damage to it, so...
Okay. Anything else for me?
No.
Thanks. Dan? Okay. DD eleven and DD, you want to go into drainage?
I don't know. Do we have to go into drainage, or...
Drainage, no.
Okay. Make a motion to go into drainage.
Sorry?
All in favor?
Aye.
Both.
Hey, have a seat first.
We're in drainage.
Dan, with any luck at all, do you think you can hook that up to this TV?
I think so.
You want to give it right here? To both of them?
Whenever you're ready for me.
You're ready?
Right now, can you go ahead?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that, this is the life of a contentious deal, getting stuff to work on the TV.
Well, actually...
He's just on this side, isn't he?
Mm-hmm. I don't know why that's even hanging there.
Supposedly.
The TV, huh?
What in the world? Where is they just...
I don't know.
It's just a controller for that, even.
Oh.
That's always the question, isn't it?
It is.
You got that over there? There you go.
Yeah, I think I see it at the line of...
My grandkids haven't been here since then, they must have walked two hours looking for it.
I know. So, this is what we put together for a way to view the aerial photography that we took of District Eleven, uh, HK two, and many different tributaries that go into there. So I think DD twenty-nine, uh, DD, I'll try to pick some of the others. There's a few sub-districts and some laterals in there as well. Um, but either way, what we did was, we've got roughly twenty, uh, four hundred photos that essentially covered the entire district with some overlap. And then we went through and we viewed each of those photos and sorted them out, gave them a brief description on any kind of damage that we saw. So there's just a little over half of them had no damage at all. Um, a little over half had some damage, and, um, we tried to sort the damage into different, uh, different categories. So, over here, there's a few different things you can see. Uh, one is a map that shows different drainage districts. The map can be zoomed into and zoomed out of, um, to show, whoops, to show the different drainage districts, uh, throughout the entire county and then particularly the ones that we filmed. And then you can see all these little arrow icons along here. They have different colors, and the colors indicate different things that we saw. Um, so a black arrow indicates that we saw no damage, um, a blue arrow indicates sloughing. Uh, there's a little key up here that I'll pull out to help me with some of the others. Uh, so a blue arrow is, a small blue arrow is sloughing, a large blue arrow is sloughing and some pipe damage. A red arrow is pipe damage. So the main things that we looked for were slough, sloughing, pipe damage, um, surface washout, so something where there's erosion occurring from the surface of the bank down into the ditch, and then other damage, uh, which is mainly, we noted if we saw trees or shrubs growing in the ditch. I think there's a couple of other things in there too, but there aren't that many of those purple arrows. And then, uh, the size of the arrow would change if you, if we saw multiple things going on in the same photograph. So right here is your map. Um, and then off to the side is where images will upload. And if you're trying to upload all the images at once, it'll move kind of slow, but if we can just look at a few or one in particular, that'll go pretty quick. So I'm gonna look at these, and I highlighted roughly three pictures right here, excuse me, uh, eleven pictures. Six of them show sloughing, four of them show no damage, and one of them shows some pipe damage. I'll zoom in on that area real quick. It's a lot easier with the mouse, by the way. Yeah. But I've selected all these photos along the ditch right here. Just a minute for it to upload. But either way, with the, with the map, you can quickly figure out which areas need some attention, which areas don't. Um, and then we took high resolution, high resolution photography, so photographs are at a fairly high accuracy, but they can be zoomed in, uh, readily. So I'm just gonna open this image in a different tab real quick. And this one, I'm trying to remember what, what it said for the notes along here. Now, as I understand it, um, you guys are used to seeing essentially a quadcopter that would fly down and take a video of the full damage, of the full ditch, and then you'd, uh, watch the video and correspond the video with what you see damage on a map and then work that backwards. We can do that as well. We have a quadcopter, and we can even get, um, uh, lower elevation photography. This, these were taken at about four hundred feet, which is about the maximum, uh, elevation that you'll see an aerial drone fly over with. Um, so drones fly between a hundred and fifty and four hundred feet, whereas planes are generally higher than that. Here's a, here's a picture of, uh, road crossing, and as we zoom in here, you can get a pretty good picture of what's going on. Uh, there's some islands in the bottom of the ditch, um, there's some basic sloughing, but that's pretty old stuff, so there's not a whole lot more there. And then, actually, this road crossing's in pretty good shape. So we'll go back to our, back to our viewer. It'll take a little bit longer to upload than I'm typically used to.
This is...
Also with the photos, there's a photo name, and then there's a description of what we see right next to it. So in this case, there's some sloughing, and we'll be able to see in a minute, um, as we scroll down through here, sloughing, sloughing. About all of these show some sloughing, and then this one will show some pipe damage right in here once it comes up.
The speed of this is based on your internet connectivity, isn't it, Dan?
Yes, very much so. So when I was viewing this in my office, it was considerably faster.
Do we have issues with internet speed here?
Don't think so.
I mean, if it just, it seems like any presentation that we do right here to get on the screen, it's always exceedingly slow or non-existent.
And a lot of it could be the security system is buffering from the left.
It turns out, okay. Um, so as an alternative, I mean, the, the, the big, the big picture here is the map, that we can quickly identify what's going on, and if you, and if you want to see a photo, we can quickly grab that and correspond it with exactly where that image is at. Now, we also can upload photos just as a regular thing to your server, um, so, so that they're just in a file, and you can click through those just as if you're looking at pictures of your family. Um, the map is, is an online accessible thing, so that's something that, uh, one of our groupers down in, in Des Moines put that together, and he does quite a bit of that. And then the photos are, there's really nothing terribly special about the photos outside of that they're exceedingly high resolution. Now, the fewer photos we highlight, generally the faster the upload speeds are, so we can... I'll just try to pick it on one, and we'll see how that goes. There's a few different ways you can select photos. There's a couple of different tools. So you can select multiple, or you can just click on a point and say, I want to look at that one right there. We'll see if this goes a little bit faster for us. In the meantime, that, this is the photo that showed some pipe damage. I'll get my bearings real quick here. You can see right in here, there's some, there's starting to be some erosion from the top going down into this pipe, and it's starting to eat out around the bank, whereas this one here relatively good shape. So that's the type of things that we're looking for. Um, of course, there's a few photos in there that there's just, you know, semi-truck size washouts and things like that going on. I remember seeing one where you could see the entire pipe, probably thirty or forty feet of it just laying in the bottom of a trench that had been completely washed out. So there were, there were some instances and stuff like that. Um, either way, uh, as you can see with this ditch here, there's some island and things like that that are just more long-term maintenance than FEMA issues, but they may need to be addressed at some point. Um, and I typed up some notes that I'll probably send out in an email here, that are just generic notes based on overall condition of the ditch, um, because there were stretches that were absolutely fine, and there were stretches that were needing some attention whether, whether flooding occurred or not.
So Dan, like that, means that's kind of a specific area with that pipe concern? That, and you go back to the map, so is it gonna tell you, you know, right exactly where that is for the most part?
Yes. Now, one thing that we can do, let me get out of my point tool here. I hit this little X and it'll remove anything. We can easily filter out for, if we just want to look at things that are say pipe damage, we can go down to this yellow bar here and click on, uh, where is the pipe damage? I found sloughing and pipe damage, washout. Well, let's just say we want to look at, at photos that are a combination of sloughing and pipe damage. You can click on the one bar, and as you can see, there's just...
Did you check these out?
Yep. And then all the different individual markers, as to where those would have popped up. You can also select multiple, or just deselect maybe one. But that's, it's easy to filter out which ones you want to see and which ones you don't want to see. So in the case of kind of the other damage, we'll quickly pick out, there's just a couple instances here, and then these two spots and this one. Over here, I think that was basically a wooded area, uh, so trees may want to be removed at some point. Further down here, and those two. And it'll only upload the two images that we have selected here. There's also coordinates associated with every image that you can see in here, the altitude, the GPS longitude, latitude, and then full description. Uh, looks like I saw some brushing here. You guys typically do spraying on a...
For brush, yeah. A third, a base of a, a third of the geographical area every year.
Okay.
Third of the districts.
Sure.
And that's a three-year rotation cycle for...
Must be working real well.
Yeah. It's a good habit to be in. Again, the, the key here is that, uh, we're trying to get it on an interactive map, so, um, the photos we can take with just about any drone. Um, in fact, you can even take photos with your cell phone and, and enable the GPS on that, and we can upload those to a map just like this, so that they can be filtered out, ciphered however they want to put them on there. We've got some guys that are very good at that. Yeah, they're just, after brushing this area. Looks like that bank is getting a little bit steep in that area too.
So how do you zoom in on your problem areas?
To zoom in, um, you right-click and open the specific damage you want in a new tab, and bring that up. That's quite a bit quicker. And then, uh, zooming in is if you were on a tablet, or, um, if any of you are familiar with zooming in on any website, you can simply hold the control button and scroll in or scroll out. Um, that works on just about any web browser.
Look, there's a bank pipe there.
Do you guys have any other questions for us?
Well, you know, when you mentioned the drone flights and looking at the video footage, Trish does that, so I'll defer to her as far as what she thinks of that versus this, and I'd also ask if you have a few minutes after this, because this is our only drainage thing today.
Okay.
Can you run through that with Trish? Because that's, you know, the idiosyncrasies of the...
Yeah, the program and how to do those.
Is that fair?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, you have a, certain things kind of do that?
So you guys determine which is the, uh, damage, is that right, Dan?
You, you know, I notice like you put different, the different points of interest, sloughing or pipe damage, and which is kind of nice.
I guess, um, I don't know, I was just making a note to myself that it seems pretty specific in the damage type, which is good, but I like to see the drone footage and, um, and Phil out there to evaluate it in person.
Sure.
Because what it looks like there, I, I don't know if the bank pipe was noted on this picture or not, but I personally would put that as damage.
Okay.
And have Phil look at it, because I would rather have something noted and have him look at it versus skip over it.
Okay.
Um, I get pretty specific.
Sure.
Well, you, this is still a general overview, and, and you're, like Rick mentioned, you're trying to note, like, if you want to filter sloughing versus, thank you, sloughing versus pipe damage, you can click on it so that you can just look at that, and then you can determine, you know, is that something that send Phil out to look at? I mean, there, I guess what I'm trying to say is you're not trying to make a determination of the amount of damage or whatever, you're just trying to make it so that in the interactive map, you can filter, you know, what do you want to look at?
Yeah. And highlight the areas.
Each of these pictures are a snap of the whole ditch, is that...
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
...concurrently, not just issued areas?
Correct.
Okay.
So we, so we have, oh, the backs of the map here. So we looked at, let's see, the, the DD eleven system here, and also the HK two system up here. And, let's go ahead, and, look at this. We took, we took photos just along the entire length of the ditch, so there should be a picture of every portion of the ditch that you can look at.
Okay.
So also for future use, if somebody comes in with a, with a repair, you can quickly say, okay, well, what field are you in, and what pipe are you looking at? And you can get exactly down to that area and know what the condition was beforehand versus having to try and cut through linear photos and try to deduct where you were at. You can get exactly where you, where you want to be. Similar, and it's similar to, um, the aerial photography that you have just on the GIS website right now, although this is a higher resolution, so it can zoom in further and get more detail.
And was it just pictures and no video?
Correct. Now, we can do video if that's something that you guys want, uh, but the video doesn't translate very well to a map.
Right.
Right. I was just curious if there was any video.
So what's your timeline on doing something like this in the future? I mean, how long is it going to take?
To do a specific ditch?
Yeah.
That, now, really, my biggest, my biggest issue was, you know, just organizing the people that I needed to get to come take a look at, but...
Right.
A couple of weeks, we were, we were scrambling because one guy was out of the country, but the others were good, all right. I mean, a couple of weeks is kind of a standard timeline just to get a surveyor out, so that's about what we'd be looking at.
So basically, we'd be able to hold this forever? And I guess my other question is, is once FEMA takes a look, how long will they say, well, that's good from 2019, it's good for what, two years, you suppose, or to what point?
Do you ever know?
Well...
I mean, with the changing conditions, it's, it's not...
About every year?
Yeah.
Anymore? Because we have so many events, and I don't know.
I would say it would depend on the event, wouldn't it?
Yeah. We've had back-to-back years right now, this last year and this year, so I guess the retention time actually...
But we can use it as a barometer to see what it was, 2019. Somebody came in here and looked at this and said, well, um, you got this huge washout. Okay, well, it wasn't there when this was done.
Mm-hmm.
Great. Just like some of that stuff that when we saw from the plane wasn't, I'm assuming wasn't there. I guess that's the...
I know, like FEMA will go back and look at, um, um, GIS... I know, like FEMA will go back and look at GIS imagery, Google Earth, whatever, and see if it was potentially there before the ditch, you've been.
I think any of these things, drones or, you know, video footage you're talking, Bruce, it documents, you know, when you did it. And obviously, as much damage as we have right now, it makes it so that you can go look at that damage if it's FEMA, get the Phil out there to document it. And then it certainly has historical record. Anytime you have, whether it's a drone or picture footage, for looking back. So it kind of serves two purposes, I guess, when you do these types of documentations, I guess is my thought.
Well, I guess anytime we have proof that that's something that happened or makes it easier to look at, I guess the fifty-dollar question is, is how much do you want to spend every year doing it? How much are you going to put aside?
And there's different things that we can look at doing here too. I had quite a bit of my time just in reviewing the photos. So if you just want a documentation of, of ditches in general, without having them gone through, that's something we can do at a lower cost, certainly. And then video's fairly easy. But the actual drone flight, we did that in less than a day. I think it was, we came up on a Friday and probably would have had it done in the morning if it weren't for some really high winds. It kept running us off track.
No, it doesn't blow up here very much.
No.
Because you actually used a fixed wing drone to fly this, didn't you?
Correct, correct.
It's not about quadcopters looking.
Yeah, it looks like, really looks like a V2 bomber, black. Makes it impossible to find when it lands in the field.
Yeah. You should paint it orange.
Or yellow or. Exactly. So for that one, we can fly it pretty quickly. The quadcopter, we can get down a little bit lower, takes longer to fly. But it also can take the high winds and things like that that we were regretting down there for that reason. Otherwise, our fixed-wing drone does fantastic photography very quickly.
So is this, these stats over here in the corner? Is that part of the entire, that ditch?
Yep, this is for the portion of the ditch that we've zoomed into. And you can kind of see these little hazy areas.
Right.
Other photos that we took. Right now, I just selected where I see sloughing, pipe damage and surface washout. That's four pictures right there. But in all, there's twenty-five, twelve, four and three is forty-four pictures along that section. And see, there's a little scale here, so six hundred feet. So we're looking at probably a little over a mile right here.
Okay, I'm just looking back at my notes from the meeting on April fifteenth. You said you were going to be charging two hundred dollars a mile. Now, are you charging more than that for this right here? Did you put any, and you said there was like a hundred and forty dollars per hour for detailed documentation. So what is, what was it going to be for this right here?
Well, we told you, it sounded like you guys were interested in the two hundred dollars not to exceed for this particular project. So that's something that we'll stick with. We do certainly have more money than that invested in this. Particularly with my time looking this over.
That's what I'm saying, you know, for someone to sit and look at all those photos, that takes time.
Yes, it does. Now, my method was, I just had them on my hard drive. I wasn't particularly interested in where they were at. So I just clicked them through, just like, just like a slideshow. So it was faster than this, but it still took some time.
But the, the time involved is, we see the interactive part of it. Because then everything is documented. If you want to see this area and you click on it, it brings it up and tells you exactly what it is. And it's noted. I mean, you said you could do it probably for a lesser cost, but it's basically going to be same thing, but it's just going to be the pictures across whatever dredge ditch you fly. Without, you probably wouldn't even have the interactive part of it then, would you?
Well, we could or we could not. We can certainly just give you top photos. But the interactive mapping is kind of where the value's at. So that's something that we generally like to incorporate.
But you may be the, okay, so if you have the interactive mapping, so you have the picture of the ditch with the pictures, you know, associated. But you didn't take the time to say that it was a bank slough off or a pipe breakage or something.
Exactly.
You would, unfortunately, it would be Trish. Fortunately, unfortunately, she could go through, much like she does with the drone flight, and just keep clicking along, you know, the ditch and say, oh, this location, there's a broken pipe. And this location is a gigantic hole.
Yep.
That would be someone else's time, not your time, because you went through and actually noted all of those, all of those concerns.
Yep.
So if you don't do that, it's less expensive, obviously.
Exactly.
If we did future drones like, just like this, what would the cost be?
Uh, I think that's a very good question. And I'm going to need to come back and give you a better, a better price on that. It would be different for sure. This is something, we hadn't done this particular combination of skill sets before. So we went ahead and tried your price and went with that. We need to review that. And again, it depends on what all you guys are interested in. So we could probably do something for you or a piece meal if you want. If you want the US review, if you want to want to make, so on and so forth. But we've got a much better idea of what that would look like.
I guess I, you know, I've worked with a lot of mapping programs and such, not exactly like this. But the beauty of this is, the interactive part, where it shows the entire ditch with the footage. You can, you know where you are, you click on the area of the ditch, obviously brings up the photos. It, it's a reference. I mean, it's not just a whole, you know, if you have a drone flight.
Yeah.
It's nice, it shows good pictures. But then you've got to, you know, go back and research, okay, where was that bad spot? This, you know exactly, when you click on, it's going to tell you precisely, you know, what that problem area is. And it's always there. It's like, this is, I'm pretty sure if you zoomed in, there are those bank pipes showing up there.
These are in bad shape, it's totally broken off. Also, a little bit below that, there's a washout here.
Yeah. I agree, this is really, we've got to decide what's the best thing for our buck. You know, which is, it's a lot of money. What do we, we need to decide what are the.
And we'd like to know what the cost of something like this is, I guess.
Sure.
Yeah. The final cost or whatever.
Yeah, there you go, yeah.
I'll be back to you guys.
Yeah, that'd be good information for us to think about, because it's.
True. I would think kind of a nice time of year to look at this, because the grass is mashing short.
Yeah, the fields aren't planted.
Right.
You can see the washout. You got a question?
Yeah, I've got a question. I guess, would it be possible to get the drone pictures kind of have like a broad summary? And then if it looks like there's, you know, if you just, in a quick and dirty kind of summary, you know, noted problem areas, I guess, then could you go back and do the further analysis so that you're not jumping in whole hog with the, you know, really expensive version? And if it looks like it's something that's a feasible project or a needed project, then I guess do the further analysis.
Sure. Well, I would say that this kind of is the, a method of getting a broad stroke. So that then you can send out a surveyor to get an actual idea of, okay, how many trucks will be doing it? What's actually going on here?
I mean, I see this as like, they really, you know, it's only a product. It's cool, it's a nice toy, but it's also potentially a lead odor and very expensive toy. If we're just going to just. You know, in provision baseline. And if you don't do a project in five or ten or twenty years, you're going to have to redo it anyhow.
They saw it in the photos. So like, if you're looking for pipe damage in particular, you're looking for.
That's kind of. Right now, according to you.
Hopefully, it's a little bit.
And I think now with being the FEMA, you know, with all the damage we had, it'd be good for, to show FEMA what we do have. She's just going to be here now, here so quickly. Who wants to spend their money, what's the best thing?
Absolutely.
I got a suggestion. We get into pictometry, right? You pay that and they fly the county every three years.
Yep.
You can fill up a building site. Why couldn't you follow that dredge ditch three years ago or two years ago when they flew it? And do the same thing? You would have a base of what you had then to what you have now.
And that's available like multi-years. There's different years on there that you can compare. And that's like the FEMA people will check that.
Yeah, they flew that two years ago, so next year they'd be flying it again. But you would have the, you'd have your baseline for FEMA that way.
Mm-hmm, to see that it was not there or was there, yeah. And FEMA goes through every claim.
Yeah.
And checks it probably every six directions.
Mm-hmm.
They sit on this side of the room and trip me down about the GMA.
I know, I tried to move back a little bit more.
They do fly the entire town.
Then it was showing this picture, she can go out here and pull up any building site, any farm site, any buildings, and put it in. Well, you can follow the ditch right along with that. And you'd have your base point.
But the, in the country, you know, resolution for those flights is lower resolution than it is in towns.
No, no. It's same resolution.
It has to be same river.
Yeah, because they're flying the whole county.
They, they, when we get the information back, the towns, cities, you know, and I don't have that many in this county, but you can check on that. But the, you know, they will have like the, say in the city of Humboldt, where if they want to pick on a building, then you can, it's very high resolution. They can tell you the, you know, height of the courthouse and do all of the pictromedy stuff. That same level of detail isn't available out in the cornfield in the middle of the section in the colony.
There's multi, in town, multi-directions. They come from the north and the south and the east and west in town. They don't do that as much in this country.
Right, so there's a little differential. I don't know how much that will make.
It's just a view, it's just like a three-D, three-D view versus a one, one-way. So same resolution, it's just a different type of view.
When we pulled up Murray Bridge over there, we could see it just.
So you're right on the documentation, I think, is, we're already doing it, so that should help.
Right.
Going back, but FEMA said it wasn't there before or not.
That gives you your base point.
So we should probably be utilizing the technology we already have.
Right.
You know, this is getting, you know, way more specific though, when you do the drone flights and.
This is for FEMA, so we got to show it what it is today from the damage from the winter, this last flooding that we had. But we could use the pictorial for the pictromedy.
For the baseline.
For the baseline, and then.
Yeah, you find your damage and then they say, well, you could go back to pictorial to see if it was there last year or two years, or two years ago, I guess is when that was.
Right.
This is just a comparison. As close as I can. So it starts to get a little bit blurry about this point. And you can see a fair bit of stuff. This would be the aerial photography that you guys sign up for every seven years.
Yeah, and if you take off like the layers on it, like the township makes it blue or whatever.
Correct. Yeah, right now, I've got the drainage district.
Yeah.
But it looks like you've got a 2017 and a 2014 aerial view.
Like you say, it ain't real clear.
Yeah. Yep, so we can get about three times the resolution with the drone. And again, using a different drone, we can get down a little bit closer too, if there's more to look at. But this is certainly, I mean, this is, I spent a lot of time on this website. It's so helpful just to, just to have an idea of what's going on.
This is the beacon.
Yep.
And I still have. It's the eyes of the farmer that is out there, because they know, they've seen, they, you know, if they report, then we have the ability to go check it, look at it ourselves.
And when we flew over Bloody Run, there was a lot of damage on Bloody Run, but I didn't pinpoint all of it. But there was, there's a lot of slight in Bloody Run, on the creek.
And that's where I like to have Phil look at. You know what I mean? Yeah, there you go.
Where's that at? That up?
Up north, right.
Yeah, off the county. Off the top, so we. Let me take a minute, I was still clinging to the. Probably drawing the map.
Did you get video of him? On YouTube?
He told us first thing, first of all, I promise I won't do any rolls. What a good thing. I had a couple cups of coffee and I promised I won't get sick in the front seat of your plane.
Now, he was good, it was good, smooth flight, huh?
Yeah.
Nice day.
Problem is, I was trying to find the computer and pinpoint the GPS everything as we were flying over there, fun. By that time, I'm in the middle of field, but we got the basic, where they are.
So did you end up with something that you can give back to Trish to help what she's got? Okay, you did get that.
Now, that's what we're looking for. What charities need to look at.
Yep. This to be a just more precise, you know, as a drone flight. So it, remember we had the whole, overall discussions, there's some different options. We've done, we've done pretty good with our different options. So that's what we're, part of the whole process.
We just need to sit down now and figure out with the map and see which ones we want to go back over. Drone flight, there you go, to pick out what we have.
And then you brought up another good thing in this whole process, the pictromedy. If we want historical, just historical reference, God forbid we get another FEMA event that they question, did this happen this year or did it happen three years ago? We might be able to utilize that just for that part of it. And not even, you know, if we're just needing historical documentation. So I think it's been a good process thus far for having some different methods of keeping track of all this.
I think if Dan can give us a, a total cost or what, what we're looking at.
Sure.
You know, and we can kind of go from there and see how many mile of it we want to do and get us something to go back.
We have recent drone flights on, I will say, give or take a short handful from Jacobson, Westergaard, that Trish has got from this very recent. So that's, and this now, it covers two districts. So we've got some, you know, accurate, very, you know, close-up accurate data, recent information.
We seem sloughing on some of the older ditches, but we didn't pinpoint them because they're old. But the new ones, they was, they stuck right out at you.
Yeah, because they're black.
Yeah. And it's a good time of year to get them, because.
We've seen a lot of flights that are bent.
Yeah, there's a lot.
I mean, you could probably spend it, have a crew out doing it the rest of the summer. I don't know if we'd get them all done.
Yep. The one we got to look at is up there by Martin's. And that's probably take a work order just to go up and get that done.
All right.
Well, that was very good. I think Trish, like I said, the drone stuff, I know she was looking at some of that in the last week or two. And if you could take a little bit of time, because this is kind of interactive and, you know, you say you got some of the button pushes and clicks to make it work. Well, you know, make it work better as you're going through it. And pass that on to her and then she can go through it like she does the other stuff.
Absolutely.
And then, one thing about this being web-based, if you will.
Yep.
We all have access to this, correct?
Absolutely. Anyone, anytime.
So I don't know if you, well, you sent it to me and it does, I will say, if you have fast internet, this works a lot better. It, it, it works a lot better, because you don't, when you click on a, like Dan, to a section that's maybe a dozen photos, so it's a mile section or something, or half-mile section of the ditch, it loads immediately. This is internet's. This is, internet's extremely slow.
This is like my at home.
It's not gonna do work, Mike.
Look on something, then you go outside and do something, come back in, see if it's there.
It can go lower.
Yeah.
So that does kind of...
I didn't know when ours was going out in the country yet, was it not?
Ours is super fast, so then, like I said, when you're looking at that, and now I understand better, you can kind of filter it down and you get it down to that area you're looking at. It just loads, you know, right now with good, fast internet.
Yeah, it's pretty quick.
Pretty quickly, yeah. Doesn't... You don't have to go out and molder on to sort it out.
Going back for the fifth time.
Yeah. I think this is good. I think the overall process on this is good. I think the plane flying, drone flying, and Bruce's... I like his last comment was, if you got the guy that says, "Hey, right out here," and I'll point out it on the map, "There's a giant hole." You know, you can never beat that.
Right.
Are you gonna email all of us a way to access it online?
Yeah, well, I can email it to Trish.
Okay.
Can you forward that on to us?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Just basically a link.
I'll give it... Yep, but I just want to be able to see it.
You bet. Anytime, you know, I'm going through it.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Dan.
Have a great day.
Anything else in Gray?
Yeah. Um, I need some bills.
Yeah, what? Sorry.
I'm just curious, this one for... For, oh, it's an agwell closure, all 35. I just was gonna check and see what they thought. Everything was good on that? Forty-five hundred dollars. Questioning, that's our share of the agwell closure?
Our share.
No, that's for their...
Engineering.
Their engineering? All right.
I answered that.
Oh, here.
Brad C. That's for that one that was out in that field with the closure.
Good.
It's hanging anyway. You get a lot. You get a lot of hard engineering expense.
I have another question. Visiting with John Norman on, uh, out here in North Town.
Okay.
And it's rental on that scraper to try to fill that washout area in. His question, um, is that gonna be picked up by the drainage district? Seems it was basically rock, trying to put the dirt back over where the water had washed through all through the summer of last year. He rented a scraper, put some of the dirt back over the top of it so they could farm it. I said I would bring that to board.
That portion, he'll have to split out the bill, because I know he did other stuff too with it. But yeah, we can do that.
Do you, everyone feel that... Because, you know, I also talked to John, and he talked to me, just with that same concern that you brought up to Bruce. "Well, I need to rent this toe behind blade." Because when the contractor was out there and leveled off, what they were supposed to level off, they just didn't level it off very well. And that was the main emphasis for his blade rental, just so he could get it smoother, to get it farmed. Is that really technically the amount that he spent on that project of that blade rental to go back to the contractor versus the district?
Well, the contractor told him that was all they were gonna do.
True.
He said, "That's all I can do. I got it. I'm done."
But it wasn't very good.
And it wasn't done enough to basically to farm it. He still had to put some more dirt in that washout, so I guess I'm...
What do you think, Bruce? I mean, you kind of explained it. Contractor didn't really get it to farm the raw conditions.
Well, I don't know how much of that dirt went south, went into the... But it doesn't look like there's an overabundance down there either. I went down and looked in that area. All John's asking, I don't know what he did with it. I don't know how long he had it. He said he had it for a day down there. The pictures I have from last time I was out there, he... It's clearly...
I... He evidently had already done the work, so it looks more like it was probable.
Yeah, that's what he was at.
That was... That was last... Two weeks ago Saturday.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that was like a...
Yeah.
It looked better.
Yeah, I seen it when it was like that, but I was out there just not too long ago and the work had been done.
Mm-hmm. Last time I looked at it, it was just a week or so later. It was pretty good.
I have a question, Bruce. Did John come in or is it contractor?
What do you think?
The contractor's putting...
You think...
Pushing that dirt back.
Yeah.
And then John...
John's just the contractor?
You gotta put more dirt in there, and he's like, "I can't, I'm done."
Well...
So he went and got a scraper and did some more work, because he said, "I wanted it to farm it better."
How bad was it?
Pre-rush.
I guess that's my question is to who...
One or the other, I think we should take care of it.
Yeah.
Whether it be going back to the contractor or the district.
Somehow, I just said, "We'll figure it out. We'll get it taken care of." Gets the bill put as soon as he gets the bill for the scraper and whatever.
I mean, he's got good pictures, so sometimes we don't have that. I think it's good.
And...
Or does he go after the contractor then?
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe he should do that.
Try that first, that angle first?
Yes.
That's why I think it should probably be... I'm trying to think, we had that issue on DD2 over by Gilmore. Because we hired someone else to come in and level it up. Do you remember that, Trish? It was in the fall.
Oh, I don't remember how we did that.
I'm trying to remember.
That was... Oh, I remember that one.
Yeah, but why don't you research how we handled that?
Oh, that was a whole different bird though.
Same type of bird though.
But I think we took that off of...
Off the bill.
The lawsuit and all that.
Yeah. I mean, and I think that instance, we did, we took it against God's argument.
As... Yeah.
Work that he showed us.
I'm pretty sure we did.
He deducted from the final payment thing.
I think if you look at something like that, I think that we need, and Trish needs, a copy of John's rental bill.
Right. Well, he said he would get it to us instead of they got, uh, got some stuff. They got billed for us. Said he'd give a copy to us or get it to one of us, and we would get it to you, to Trish, so...
Sounds good.
Okay, anything else for drainage? Motion to go out?
Motion to go out of drainage.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hold, carry. We're out of drainage, back in general session.
We can all...
Move on, Zen pegging in.
Bruce, I like the fact that you questioned some of those bills. I do a lot of times too. A lot of stuff that comes across on...
Hi, Danny.
Good morning.
There's, you know, lady changing.
I guess I just...
Sorry, we're late again.
Wondered when it...
That's all good then, right?
Bound it. I'll make sure that's what I signed tonight.
I agree. Me too.
Yeah, when you sold cars, if you did something and found out, come back to the street, take it out of your check, I don't want thirty-seven hundred dollars. Be okay, but all the throw wasn't supposed to be a...
No, I honestly, I looked at that too and said, "Really?" I questioned a few.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's okay.
All right. Reparation, that bubble.
Um, what you got here, I did let you know at the beginning or at the end of last year that we would be doing this flight here. This is a six-month report that I'm just gonna give you updates on. Not any special requests or anything, just to tell you what we're at, the thing. Um...
I just have to give you about time.
Yeah, that's all right. I do that occasionally. Interesting is, I was looking through your guys' numbers. One of the things that I was able to determine already at the six-month level for you at the end of March, compared to last year's spill numbers, you're at 106% of those numbers right now. 106% of the individuals and 107% of the families that we serve. I'm not quite sure what the increase is.
Yeah, what's going on?
Well, when I look back, a lot of the counties, some of the counties, we can go back and reflect the disaster, you know, declarations that have happened, like O'Brien. We served 35 families over there. However, you don't have any on the books. So nobody applied for disaster in Humboldt County, at least for disaster relief and what we provide. I think probably, if I were to speculate, it would be that we're getting the word out more now that we've taken over again the food distribution. The word is out more, and I think just the people involved in that process has made a big impact, so... Because when you look at your reports that I gave you, the reports that have the blue lines on it are recent numbers, those already show you how many individuals we've served with the food programs at 1,604 and 650 council. So the food program is a really, uh, is a real big need here in the county. Obviously, the second biggest service is the emergency energy services that we provide, and that would be like low-income energy assistance for out homes. That program, along with what we call ESIP, which is the Emergency Crisis Payments Program that replaces furnaces and such, those together, we've served over 1,657 individuals at about $146,000, just about $147,000 already for the six months, so... Today, those are the two biggest programs that we have. And then, of course, then you look at the senior program and special projects, those were the other big numbers that we had. Seems like the biggest ones have obviously focused around home utilities and housing themselves, so... Which is not unusual.
We watch you the winter months, and that's where it takes all the money.
Exactly. One of the issues that I'm speculating could, and it may drift over this way a little bit, is with Prestige Foods. I always kind of warn everybody, because I know some of the changes that have been going on over there on Wright County. One of the challenges that tend to happen is that when they do a full hire-up, as much as 40% of the turnover can occur, and a huge percentage of those who turn over tend to stay in the area that they migrated to, so... And I do know in the surrounding counties, when I look at Webster, when I look at Wright itself, and I look at the other bordering counties, housing is pretty much gone for competition for low income, because it's being used for those employees. So what you'll tend to see is a migration back and forth in those counties until housing has fallen. So how, lack of housing stock in area is gonna definitely possibly affect you all in this county as well, as people try to move and find a place to settle in, so... I don't know if you've experienced that already. Have you guys seen an increase in migration from...
No. I don't think so.
They might be barring a little bit or you don't see that. Um, we have seen a challenge probably in Webster County has been the biggest one. Obviously, it's just right over, right over the border there, and there's a large amount of more housing down in that area, so they're gonna tend to drift that way. And I do know, like in, when we go to Wright County, in a lot of the communities, we don't see Eagle Grove for instance, a lot of the housing has been moved up and eaten up by a lot of the employees that are coming in, so... I don't know if it'll affect you or not, that's all the better for Humboldt County, so... But I just wanted to give you these numbers. The second attachment that you have on the back of your report there is just a demographic. Does it little breakdown, shows you who's giving the services and what are some of those characteristics for those families and individuals that are there. As with one of the things I talk about a lot, we're seeing a huge increase, as much as 70 to 80% of the people that we serve are working families. So the old misnomer that they're not working and they're not doing anything is not true. A lot of them usually are holding one to two jobs, and in some cases, I wonder how they're capable of doing that if it's a single parent family and they got children. That's gotta be quite a challenge, especially when you look at the cost of childcare today, so... Kudos to them that are able to survive today, because it's... The economic upturn definitely hasn't ripped down as far as it could have helped them out, but... That's the numbers I got. I just wanted to give you the report, see if you have any questions.
I mean, it's great, obviously, that you guys are doing a good job, but it's scary thought that we're at 106% and we're not through the year.
Six months. Now, do you understand...
That's the scary part. If you didn't figure what's going on, that that's happening.
And you don't have an exact answer, not that you expect you to.
Well, we'll know as we get closer to the full year report. But do you remember too, this is the time of year where people don't come in for as much assistance. But they're as well probably utilized to be fooled at the mall. So that's not gonna be a big challenge for you all, but it's still one to watch for, and it's definitely one to put your thumb on if you can figure it out. And we'll be paying attention to that very closely, so...
Well, we look forward to your next update.
Okay.
Maybe you'll ask more answers.
Yeah, yeah. That's the only thing I can tell you is exactly what happened.
We appreciate it very much, Danny.
No problem.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, fine, good.
We'll try to keep John dying next time.
Thank you.
If we can get you ahead of drainage, it's always better.
Well, I'm glad you're talking, I wouldn't mind your beer.
Okay.
Is this a group application?
Yes.
Application for group life insurance?
Is there anything?
We've been with Lincoln Financial for a few years now. So we renewed our regular health insurance, we renewed our partial self-funding, and now this is the life insurance. They will be doing an open enrollment tomorrow here at the courthouse if there are new people that want to sign up, or people want to change their policy, or if you want to just come in and talk to IGHCP. Yeah, for Lincoln.
That was in our packet, was it?
Yes. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So this is more of a...
Thinking on the front of it.
No, I know, but I think there's some other...
Yeah, but with the fear of stuff or...
Gives you the time.
Technicality, formality, that makes sure we get this.
Yeah.
There's no reason of changing, everything is good?
No, that should be...
No, this just gives them the option if somebody wants to get some life insurance, or you don't have to go through a medical screening, you can get some type of life insurance.
I think that gives exactly the same point.
Well, essence of time, I would make a motion to authorize the chairman to sign the application for the group life insurance and participation agreement with Lincoln Financial.
I'd second.
Any other discussion? Is that all in favor?
Lincoln Financial?
Uh-huh.
Aye.
Okay, so you have one page to sign here and one to sign there.
Okay. Set date and time for the final county budget amendment?
I think we did. We did.
No, do we need to vote on that?
We did.
We did?
Well, you said all in favor, I said aye.
I didn't hear you say all in favor, okay.
All in favor of the second test.
Aye.
I didn't remember it either, so...
I didn't either.
Okay, good.
You must be quiet.
Yeah.
All right, now it's done.
Okay.
Um, we need to do a budget, one more budget amendment before the end of the fiscal year. The state always recommends that you do that before June, because you want to be sure and let your public have a chance to come and protest at a meeting if they would like to, or just ask questions or whatever. And they recommend you not do it in that last month before the end of fiscal year.
How much?
So is there some time in May?
Yep. May 20th at 9:00 AM is what I'm looking at.
Sounds good. Make a motion to set the date and time for the county budget, final amendment of May 20th, 9 o'clock.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hold, carry.
And 8:35 for Ben's worked out fine.
Right. Thank you.
Man, it feels like we all had that planned.
Well, it's kind of like, that's when I had my budget amendment scheduled, so I just moved mine back.
You need to choose your own?
Yeah.
There you go.
It worked. Yeah, it worked.
Set the place on file, the sheriff orderly report for the quarter ending March 31st.
Well, assuming Ben's the chief here, and he's not here for personal request, that everything must be in order, satisfied with him, so I'd make a motion to accept his orderly report, and even 31st of March.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hold, carry. Okay. Uh, committee reports.
Uh, this past week, no extracurricular official meetings, I did look at a couple of drainage concerns that have been or are getting resolved, so, that was what I did this past week.
I didn't have any either.
Okay.
Uh, Saturday, excuse me, Friday, I, I went up and flew David Dave. Um, Saturday, I drove out to, along C-49 to see if I could see some of those locations and get some pictures of those. Um, I did have one request, which I thought I'd throw out there, I'm still getting several, um, scoldings about the valuation increases, and wondering if there would be any possible way that we would consider having some type of open forum.
To, uh, explain it?
To explain it to the people as to how their, uh, valuations went so high, and why the state has no, um, why they don't have to explain how stuff went that hot. I said, "I don't know if they'd want to do that." We'd have to locate that with Linda, I'm assuming, and I don't know if you'd want to get into it, but I said I'd bring it up, so, what's your guys' thoughts?
Well, I've had a lot of questions to explain that if Linda didn't do it, that the state was going to come in and just manitiorally across the board.
That's the question, though.
Yeah.
What, how does the state just have the ability to come in and say, "Okay, you're right, we're gonna raise your taxes on your, your valuation of your house $60,000, and you didn't do any?"
Yeah.
I mean, there, there's houses that have been on the market for, they say, "Well, part of it was that the housing market's been pretty healthy." Well, there's five houses out on West River Drive, and four of them have been on the market for two years.
Mm-hmm.
But yet, supposedly, uh, you know?
Right.
I said I'd ask, I don't...
Yeah, I've had that question asked, but that's how I've explained it out.
Well, the explanation process, Linda was in here a while back, started this, and kind of gave us an overview, to a degree, of the explanation, I mean, which I think she did a good job, none of us are very well versed in how this whole business takes place. The assessor is, I would defer questions to her, and I think she could do a really good job of explaining it to her.
But it might not hurt to have, if she's willing to do it, a forum and just say, "Hey, this is in it, people are interested, they could come in."
She would be the one that would...
We might as well move our meeting.
Yeah, but I mean, that's what I'm saying, actually, I said, "I don't know where you could put it."
Yeah, gymnasium.
Yeah, I mean, and the other side of the coin is, you could get people that are probably going to be a little ticked.
Yeah.
So, I just said, "Hey, I'll bring it up to the meeting, and we'll see where it flies from there."
I think a lot of it, though, the people are thinking, "Oh, my assessment went up, you know, 15%, are my taxes going to go up 15% also?"
No, no.
And it's hard job.
That's a fear from people, and they don't necessarily understand, I mean, you can go back and tell them, "Hey, over the last few years, we've had valuations and taxes go up," but part of that kind of offsets the fact that, "Hey, you guys got a bigger pot of money to work with, so maybe the taxes won't go that much at all, so..."
Yeah, I think, I think that's the part when they tell you...
There's the levy that we have to...
So, their taxes are not...
And also, the property tax rollback can change the amount...
Isn't it just as the taxes aren't exponentially go up?
Just because their assessment went up 15% doesn't mean their taxes go up.
Oh, there's a, phenomenal, this lot of papers going to figuring the valuation that the assessor has, that we don't know.
Those guys, that's why I tell people...
But she does.
Talk to us, talk to your school board members, talk to...
Everyone's explaining one time how you value your farm.
Hospital board members, those are the ones who control...
They have a lot of...
Yeah, we have no control with the schools or the hospitals, or the hospital.
Right.
So, the people in the community need to speak with your school board member, your hospital board, and, and us.
Would it be, would it be college too? Because it's...
Yes, yes. Iowa Central, they have something.
Yeah, so it's not just all us.
No, it's not, you know, it's anywhere, a small portion of it.
Iowa Lakes, taxing entities.
Oh, Iowa Lakes too, not just Iowa Central.
There's that area up north of there, Iowa Lakes.
Taxing entities.
Okay, it depends upon where you're located at.
And a lot has to do with where the, um, rollback comes in too, you know, if they raise the rollback, or...
Increase or lower order, whatever.
I mean, yeah, that has a big factor, because nobody pays 100% or nobody with real estate, you know, in town, pays 100% on their house. You may have a $100,000 house, but you might only pay 50,000, you know, pay based on that 50,000, because the rollback takes that off of there. So, it depends on where those numbers are.
Well, not everybody understands the way the taxing process...
No, they don't.
They do not.
Except, most, most people think the college...
So, we are, are probably paper.
But it all starts with each other, it's a question of, you know, depression's involved, it's a multi...
Well, that's what I have, I just, I would, I'd throw it out there, I said, "I know that we aren't the only entity that, I said, there's other things that affect it, so..."
Right. The assessment's a big part of, is the start of it.
Right. And the last thing that I have is, um, I just want to thank Dave Dodson one more time for what he did, I know that there's going to be a fee for that, but I also know that, you know, he kind of got a, he said, "I'm a farmer, taxpayer, um, retired, kind of, I can save the county," so I, well, we appreciate it, and, and it was beautiful, white, so...
Well, they thank you.
Well, we did that.
I mean, in charge accordingly, don't just, I mean, it's a very gracious person, but...
I just was a little upset about the stewardesses, I didn't think that they... They didn't come around, and they found us down, and we just left. Dave did say, when we got out, you know, he's, he's doing the clearance, you know, to pull out onto the runway, and he says, "We're leaving." That was our, "Flight attendants, please prepare, we're leaving." So, anyway, that's all I have.
I had nothing official last week, okay?
Okay, Tuesday, I had a VA meeting, proved claims, we got a couple of new ones this month. Uh, Friday, I went flying with Dave and Bruce. That's all the official ones I had.
We had your bird.
Yeah, I had a new pony.
Had a new pony.
Sawed that little pony.
See, we downed it, down to the farm days, to the fairgrounds Friday.
I had a granddaughter, born 13th of January. Sawed picture, and she's planning on coming to your house to see you.
How's the, uh, little critter doing?
Oh, she's wanting to run now.
Good.
She runs circles around mom. Mom's a good mom, she, she don't let you round her very much. She'll let you pet, but she'll try to get between you.
Oh, that's all right.
Yeah.
She may just be there too.
We were looking at her last night, she's going to be a palomino, but she's got a white stripe up one leg, across her rump, and down partially the other leg.
Oh, wow.
Like a horseshoe, comes up over there now.
She's good luck.
She's a little, yeah. So, that's all I had. When you go back to taxes, don't enclose your deck, because then it's a livable porch.
You can get successful higher than that.
$20,000 worth.
Wow.
I didn't have that much of material. Okay, any other thing to come before the board?
Yeah, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hold, carry. Okay.